I'd like to welcome everyone to the May 12 regular meeting of the Governing Board Study Session. We have adjourned from our executive session, so we are good to go. Dr. Castillo.
Madam President, members of the Board. At a previous meeting, the Board approved masks becoming optional beginning May 31, the start of summer school and moving forward. This action prompted a number of questions from parents and staff about next year and wanting clarification. Tonight, we would like to share our mitigation plan for 2021-22. We hope this allows our families and staff to know what to expect so they can plan their return to CUSD. Mind you, there still is no playbook on how to manage a pandemic. Just like you, we've been operating under conflicting, changing messages and varying opinions. The administrative team has put together this plan after gathering a great deal of information and input. We hope tonight marks the beginning of the healing that needs to occur as we move toward normalcy. We are optimistic, and it is reflected in this plan for 2021-22. The trio, I believe it's the trio, is going to produce or present tonight, starting with Dr. Gilbert. So I'll turn it over to you, and thank you for all the work.
Madam President, members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to share the district opening school COVID plan for the 2021-2022 school year. We gathered feedback from a number of sources. The initial draft of the plan was sent to site administrators after a number of us at the district level worked to put this plan together. We sent the initial plan out to site administrators on April 13 to share with their site COVID committee at the elementary, junior high and high schools. This is a group that is made up of teachers working with the administrator at their sites with an average, well, either two to four committee members from each site at each level. They shared, they also shared the document, the initial document with their site councils, which is made up of parents and teachers and community members along with administrators. Feedback was also gathered from the Chandler Education Association representatives. They also serve on the site committee at their sites. Many parents emailed district administration, governing board members and site administration to share their perspective. Some also gave feedback on this document because after the April 13, when we sent that out to sites, it was also loaded up onto social media as a draft, and parents were able to see it, and they also gave some feedback from that perspective. And after all of that feedback, we updated the document from the information we received, and on April 27, we shared the document with the district COVID committee, which is a group made up of teachers from all elementary schools, junior high schools and high schools, as well as the CEA representation. I believe at that meeting, we had over 80 participants at that meeting that we held. And then we brought that information to the district administration, where we took some feedback from that group, updated it, and now you have the document that is before you today. As this has been the situation all year, not all groups were in agreement as to the direction we should be moving forward, even with all of this feedback. So things to consider as we share this information with you today. The state and local municipalities have opened with masks optional, so state and local. Youth and adult, youth and adults are participating in club sports and activities throughout the Valley, and sometimes being masked, but many times it is with no mask. Restaurants, gyms, movie theaters are open, so there's quite a bit happening in our community. After leaving school, many of our students are not wearing masks as they interact with in the community, with their friends and their families. Over the summer, some of our students and staff will be used to not wearing masks as they are coming back from the long break. Developing this district plan has been a moving target at best throughout this year and going back to March of last year. No matter the decision, there was going to be someone that was angry and not in agreement. Rules continued to change at all government levels. Staff were not in agreement, parents were not in agreement, and that has been consistent throughout. Civic leaders and health professionals had different differing opinions as to what should occur, and sometimes the directions we were given were recommended while other times it was required, and many times those changed. So trying to put something in place and at the same time knowing that it's continuing to change, and sometimes we didn't know the change was coming until it came, makes it real difficult as you're trying to put a plan together. As Dr. Castillo said, the pandemic was new to everyone and each student, family, community member, and CUSD as a district had to assess the situation and try to make the best decision with the information available at the time we were doing it. I think this is real important when you're understanding that as CUSD has a population of 44,000 students, 5,000 employees, and we're in a community of over 200,000 people with differing opinions. I think just having a family of five trying to decide what was going to be for dinner that night sometimes is a challenge, and we got quite a few things that are going on, and a lot of times because of the way that things are set up, we are caught in the middle, but we are always trying to do the best that we can. So our focus has been and has always been on our student and staff, but it will take all of the community to continue to be the supportive group that they've always been in Chandler, and parents in the community supporting our schools, supporting our students and our staff in order for us to be successful. Not only do we have a little over two weeks left of school, in that timeframe, we must focus on finals, graduation, and the end of the year events that are important to all of our students and our families. So it's important to remember that as we continue to move forward to finish out this school year. It's hard to believe that we're already in May and it's moving, moving along at a pretty good clip. It is all of this information that brings us to the CUSD opening school COVID plan for 2021-2022. We must understand that this plan will not please everyone, but we believe this is the best course of action for moving forward. So as we look at the plan that you have in front of you and myself and Mr. Narducci and Mr. Rother will, will get into this and share, our focus tonight will address how we're going to work with masks within our district, how we're going to mitigate, our mitigation plan to open for the 2021-2022 school year, and what will occur if there is an increase in COVID cases and the measures to be used to make decisions as we transition. First off, as we look at masks, as you look at this document, face coverings will be optional for the 2021-2022 school year. Sites will maintain a heightened awareness of students and staff behavior regarding mask bullying. We want to make sure that everyone feels safe on campus. And if mandated by Maricopa County Department of Public Health or an executive order by the Governor, CUSD will require masks for all students and staff. So again, masks being optional, but we would only go back to masks if Maricopa County Department of Health or Executive Order would require us to. Secondly, when we look at increased COVID cases, to address this, additional mitigation strategies may be implemented if COVID cases increase in our community or in our, in our schools. So absence of specific requirements from Maricopa County Department of Health or an executive order, CUSD will consider additional mitigation strategies when both of the following criteria are met. First, both Maricopa County Department of Health indicators are in red, which is considered high community spread. That would be 100 cases, greater than 100 cases per 100,000 and greater than 10% positivity. Next, CUSD data indicates high spread in on our, on our campuses. This would be utilizing the district dashboard that monitors the positive cases on our campuses. So for the elementary level, if the positive cases are at two, the positive active cases are 2%, that's when we would move into the increase in COVID cases mitigation plan. For junior high, it'd be 1.5% positive active cases, and high school would be 1% positive active cases. I'd like to bring you back to, these are numbers that we also had used previously when we were looking at schools. So with that, I think it's important to really understand where the information and how we made decisions in order to move to this plan and moving forward for next year, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rother, where he's going to share with you how to read this chart as to our plan. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Governing Board. At this stage, we'd like to present the individual mitigation strategies and our plan for reopening next school year. A couple of things as we go down through this chart to, to consider first is that we utilize feedback from the groups that Dr. Gilbert mentioned before in collaboration with district leadership to develop what this reopening would look like, or what this opening would look like for next school year, and we really felt that it was important to open with a sense of normalcy while also understanding the expectation of our community that we have mitigations in place to prevent the spread of COVID-19 on our school campuses and to make sure that our students are safe on our, in our schools. So with that, the left-hand column down the plan indicates the mitigation strategy. The next column to the right is the school year, what we currently have in place, and then the green column is where we're going to focus our presentation for tonight, and that's on how we plan to open the school year next year. And then finally, the column on the far right is the mitigation plan that we would put in place if we reach the thresholds that Dr. Gilbert spoke to earlier. We want to have an opportunity for you to ingest this a little bit, take a look at each of the mitigation strategies, our plan to reopen, and provide feedback on those. There's quite a few mitigation strategies that we'd like to go down through, so what I'll do is I'll kind of chunk these off in, in sets of four, let you know what the mitigation strategy is, our plan for reopening. If you'd like to provide some feedback at that point, we would, we would appreciate that, or if you'd want to wait until the end to provide feedback on the overall plan or individual mitigation strategies, that would be, that would be fine, too. So our first is social distancing protocols. So we plan to open the year next year, observing three feet of social distancing where feasible, maintaining student directional flow, which we do have those on all of our campuses, and our staff common areas will be at normal capacity. Instructional grouping, small groups will be allowable when instructionally appropriate and observe the three feet social distancing where feasible. Classroom materials and textbooks, we will allow sharing of materials with hand hygiene mitigations in place. And then the large group gatherings scheduled outdoor where feasible, and that's preferable, and the large indoor gatherings is yet to be determined. And you might see that at a few stages right now that we know that going into July, we may be at a different spot, and those large group gatherings indoors is one of those things we want to take a look at as we get a little bit closer to July. So any feedback or questions on those mitigation strategies?
It doesn't look like it. Laura, did you have anything?
I was going to save everything for the end after I looked at and hear the whole picture.
Okay.
That's okay.
Okay. I guess we'll wait till the end.
Okay, all right. The next, so we have the COVID-19 dashboard, and for the COVID-19 dashboard, as you know, we're currently updating that on a daily basis. We will transition to updating that on a weekly basis, really for the purpose is it is, it is highly labor intensive to update that on a daily basis, and it seemed appropriate when we were relying on that for school closures to update that on a daily basis. In addition to that, we had many more active cases on our campus this current school year than we do right now, and so we'll be moving to updating that once a week. The COVID-19 committee, this is one of the mitigation strategies that there was quite a bit of discussion about in our COVID-19 committee, and overwhelmingly, our, our staff with feedback from their site councils as well felt that keeping the dashboard was a good idea into next year, and so we wanted to put that into play for, for the 2021-22 school year as well. After-school activities, those would be, we will observe a three-feet social distancing where feasible. Athletics and athletic event spectators, both very much linked to AIA guidelines for that. Mitigation guidelines and protocols are truly based on AIA guidelines, so we will wait to see what those guidelines will be for next year. We're currently following those mitigation plans from the AIA right now, and we will continue to do that. And then for our spectators, again, this is an area that we want to get a little bit closer into July before we can say just what the capacity of those events will be, obviously indoor versus outdoor, and the ability to potentially social distance at those events are things to consider. Lunchtime activities, again, we're going to observe three feet of social distancing where feasible with our lunchtime activities. Lunch seating, three feet of social distancing and forward-facing at the elementary sites, again, where feasible, understanding that certain sites have different capacities of their lunchrooms and multipurpose rooms. High school cafeterias have different capacities as well, so again, that somewhat will be site-determined. Closing schools, and I want to bring your attention to this mitigation strategy as well. Obviously, this is the extreme strategy that would go into place if our active cases were high as of March 3, per the, per Governor Ducey's executive order. That responsibility and authority to close schools rests with Maricopa County Department of Public Health. So moving into next school year, our mitigation plan does not indicate when CUSD will close a school because we frankly don't have authority to do that, and we'll be relying on Maricopa County to let us know when we need to close a school in the event where cases would get to that level. And then positive COVID-19 notifications. Moving into next school year, we will continue with our classroom letters to notify families of active cases in the classroom and students of staff within three feet for more than 15 minutes in a 24-hour period, and that aligns with our quarantining plan for next year as well. All right, I'm going to keep going through these. If you have any questions or feedback along the way, please stop me. Our next mitigation strategy is contact tracing and quarantining. Any student within three feet or more for 15 minutes in a 24-hour period will be quarantined. I wanted to give you a snapshot of where we're currently at today with quarantining and active cases, so you have some point of reference if things maintain, if our current spread maintains into, into July and doesn't decrease and doesn't increase. Currently, we have 14 active cases across our 45 sites, and we have 29 students currently on quarantine. I know that, I think I can speak for the team, that we would appreciate feedback on quarantining as this has been one of the topics that are being discussed in districts in the East Valley. I can tell you our, Lindsay Hartley, our Director of Health Services, has been in contact with other directors across the East Valley, and really the question of quarantining has come up a lot because when we were at our height of COVID, when we were quarantining students, it was truly a mitigation strategy that students would stay home, quarantined, much of the community was locked down. The question really becomes now with the community being relatively open and quarantining students for that seven to 10-day period, how effective is that mitigation strategy? And we would love some feedback on your thoughts on that. As we know, we haven't seen high numbers of students when they've been quarantined from our schools, end up testing positive for COVID, and we haven't seen in schools that have had masks optional that they've needed, that those students that have been quarantined or not quarantined, we haven't seen that those districts have seen an elevation in their cases as well. So this is one area that we know school districts are debating right now. Certainly, we want our students to be in school, and when we quarantine them, it does require them to be out for 10 days in cer, in situations where they receive a positive test after the five days of exposure, then they can come back after five days.
I've got a couple other things.
I've got a couple of questions about that, if you don't mind.
Yes.
So do we have any numbers on those kids that have been quarantined? Like, how many of those kids have actually gotten sick or tested positive?
So I don't have current numbers, but I did share when we were kind of at our height of quarantining in December, when, when things were, things were pretty bad across the state. We had quarantined approximately 2,700 students, and at that time, we had had 21 that had turned up as positive while on quarantine. And I want to preface that by saying, we're, we're not sure if those students contracted it while they were on our campus or whoever they were in close contact to, which is why they were on quarantine, or if they got that at home in the community somewhere else. So it's kind of hard to use that data to, to say if they've gotten it at school or not, but we didn't see, even when we were at our height of quarantining, that students were ending up testing positive while they were on quarantining.
All right, second question. Do the health folks give you any information or recommendations on if it matters whether or not the person that was exposed for 15 minutes or whatever, does it matter if they were vaccinated or not as far as the health department people or the health people?
Yeah, that, that's actually just been updated as of recently with more and more folks getting vaccinated. So two things on the quarantining and two ways that students can avoid being quarantined is, the first is if they have a positive PCR antigen test within the last 90 days from exposure. So if you just had COVID, had a positive test, then if you're within that 90-day window, you can't contract it again, and therefore those students didn't have to quarantine. Recently, the guidance has come out from Maricopa County Department of Public Health that students that are fully vaccinated do not need to quarantine. So that's new guidance that just came out as of April, and so certainly, at least in terms of quarantining, that would, that would be a benefit for students to, to get fully vaccinated. We just received an email today that starting, I believe it's Thursday, the county sites will start vaccinating 12 and up, and so if students are fully vaccinated, the guidance from Maricopa County is is they do not have to be quarantined.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Next is COA enrollment. We're going to follow open enrollment guidelines, and semester transfers will be reviewed on an individual basis. The secondary bell schedule will revert to the pre-COVID schedule. So as you know, we were in a block schedule at our secondary, and now we will go back to our pre-COVID schedules. Elementary classroom starts, we will again revert to pre-COVID procedures, and students will, will be able to report to the playgrounds on arrival. Field trips will revert back to being site-approved. Virtual course options, again, students requesting virtual coursework should enroll in Chandler Online Academy. Google Classroom expectations, teachers will be, will determine the extent of the daily use of Google Classroom and provide assignments for absent and quarantined students. When we get to quarantining students, and again, this is one of those areas that we've worked through this year and how to provide students on quarantine instruction, we'll, we'll hit on what the use of Google Classroom will be for students that are, that are quarantined. Student technology access, students may bring their own devices to school per the CUSD Bring Your Own Technology policy. Okay, next we have cleaning and disinfecting. To open the school year, disinfecting of high-touchpoint surfaces at least two to three times per day. Water fountains, the actual fountains will still remain closed, however, the bottle-filling stations will reopen, and so students will be able to bring their water bottles similar to their doing now and refill those at the filling stations for the schools that have them. Hand hygiene, we've been really impressed with how our, our teachers and staff have bought into hand hygiene and having students, you know, wash their hands or sanitize their hands multiple times during the day, so we will continue that practice into next year. Volunteers, and that we really want to limit starting the school year next year, although this is another area that we want to take a look at as we open closer to July. Certainly, we, we value our, our parent volunteers that want to come into the classroom or come into other school areas to help and assist, but we also want to be mindful that we don't, we don't need, we don't need to promote the spread of COVID in our schools, and we want to make sure that we're safe in doing that. So when it comes to parent volunteers, we're going to look at a little bit closer to July, determining what access volunteers will have. For parent visits, those will be site-approved going into next year, and virtual meetings will be optional. Exclusion guidelines, when should students stay home sick? And those will remain in place similar to this year. Students are required to be excluded for COVID symptoms per CUSD exclusion guidelines, so there will be no change to that this, moving into next school year. Transportation, again, observe the three feet of social distancing where feasible. And finally, quarantining students and their connection to the classroom. And again, we have much less students on quarantine than we had during the height of COVID, and that's a great thing. And so going into next year, students will be allowed to access missed assignments via Google Classroom, so teachers will still be responsible for updating their assignments in Google Classroom, and students' access to instruction may require site distribution of devices. So if students don't have access to devices at home in order to access their coursework, then they can be issued those devices at the school sites. So again, those are all of the mitigation strategies in place for next year and what our plan is to reopen to start in July.
Thank you, Mr. Rother.
Mr. Narducci.
I think we're done with this, at least the, the plan here that was uploaded. I do have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
So when we're at the beginning of the attachment, we have, it said that we would consider additional mitigation strategies when both of the following criteria are met. Both COVID indicators are red, indicating a high community spread, which is defined as the number over 100 cases per 100,000 in a one-week span, and then over 10%, I believe, positivity rate. And so when you're saying both of the criteria are met, you talk about the site data. Elementary, we're talking about an individual school, not the aggregate of all elementary schools. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so it would, if we, additional mitigation strategies needed to be put in place, it would actually only be on a school-by-school basis for those who needed it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Madam President, I think you, you read my notes because that was the last part of the presentation.
I'm sorry.
No problem. You know, I think I'll have you come up here and finish this, but let me just finish the last part because I think it's going to hit to a little bit that you're discussing now, and then we'll open it up to feedback and questions. School, it's no doubt that schools and school districts find themselves in a unique and challenging position. As the reality is, our community is divided in their ideology as well as opinion as to COVID-19 mitigation practices. We've seen that, we've seen that in our emails, we've seen that in our phone calls, and we've seen that in our daily interactions with our families. We also acknowledge and understand we are addressing topics where we have extreme viewpoints on both sides of the mitigation narrative. They're not even toward the center, they're extreme. The one constant is that the past year has been very difficult and challenging for all. Although direction from national, state and county agencies has frequently changed, one constant was for school districts to enact plans at the local level by using COVID-19 case data with intentionality and as it impacts school and the district community. We have a transparent plan of how we will open the 2021, 21-22 school year in front of you. We believe we're moving forward cautiously, yet optimistically. We will remain diligent in the review of local data provided by Maricopa County Department of Public Health, as well as our site-specific positive COVID-19 case rates. We will analyze thresholds of infections. We will analyze thresholds of infections, rates increase as they increase among our children, and move to further our mitigation plans as impacted by the school or individual schools. As you can see, many of the mitigation strategies that are listed in the third column of the plan, and since you've had that for a little bit here, they're very similar to the current mitigation strategies that we have in place right now and we did have in place when we started this whole process. A school or schools will increase mitigation strategies if there is evidence of substantial rates of COVID-19 spread in our community, along with reaching thresholds of positive COVID-19 cases at school sites. We will proactively communicate with our families, our students, and our staff, and assist our schools impacted move to those mitigation strategies. The length of time will be determined by regression in case rates. And Madam President, members of the governing board, knowing the amount of input that has been put into this plan across all of our sites, with our site councils, as well as our COVID site committees and our general committee, we yield to questions and feedback from you.
Thank you, Mr. Narducci. Are there any additional questions? Ms. Love?
Thank you, Madam President. So I realize that the committees probably didn't get a chance to meet before the CDC came out and reevaluated the airborne spread further and how six feet doesn't, like, it spreads more than six feet. How will that change some of our mitigation strategies?
Well, I have, I have seen some latest information on that. I can't say I know what you have. I think the problem that we have is there are studies changing every day as to how we are going to manage. I think the biggest piece right now is we know that masks are optional, we know that people have choices now. Our focus is going to be and continue to be to still work and keep social distance. We're saying a minimum of three feet, but we're still working with families to try and mitigate as much as we possibly can. So we'll continue to look and I will, I'll ask if you wouldn't mind sending me what you have and we can take a look at that as well.
I'm just looking at like news articles right now, but I guess like my question more specifically is, you know, like when we're doing like the contact tracing, I know that we've said like three feet for 15 minutes, will that be reevaluated or will that change at all, depending on, you know, what the CDC says about this?
Well, I think for our contact tracing, although we're looking at three feet when we're making contact, we still also send a letter out to the whole classroom. So when we're looking at contact tracing, there are two parts to that. One is the whole class, one is those that are in close contact that we're making, that we're making contact with. It's possible there may be some changes that we make once we take a look at that information. What's been unfortunate is there is a lot of information that is coming out on both sides of this is occurring or it's not occurring. It just depends on, unfortunately, who you're getting the information from.
And so this is going to be, this is subject to change then, depending on, because I'm sure there's going to be more information that comes out around the summertime as we're seeing vaccinations open up for our 12 to 15. We still don't have anything really on our 11 and younger, but I imagine that this is kind of a floating plan, so to speak.
We do, Ms. Love, we do anticipate changes coming down, not only nationally, from CDC. They have to, as more people get vaccinated and there's more shields in place in schools, they're going to have to change their viewpoint and they're going to have to change the recommendations. We do know that Maricopa County is coming out with some recommended changes and they'll be out shortly. We did actually share our plan with them and we're waiting to get the information back so we can actually look at their recommendations according to our plan as well. But the one thing that we really do have in front of us right now is we have data from schools that's, school districts that are similar. They might not be as divided in thought and process and the ideology as to which, you know, which, what they're following, but we do have their data rates. And I was able to reach out, and I think this is important for, you know, to some of my colleagues in other districts who have gone to optional masks and those that also have regressed in their mitigation strategies for recess time, and they haven't seen no change whatsoever in their infection rates. And again, that's not very scientific, but it's a reality of what they're seeing and what they're addressing at their school sites. And some of these districts have not been in as severe of a mitigation strategies as Chandler Unified School District has been for the length of time, and some have just gone off in March or right after the governor's orders. So there has been enough time to see if there has been any productive case rates or positive transmissions, and they're not, they're not recording anything, anything different than what their trends were prior. So, and again, as scientific, or not scientific as it is, it's again, it's data that's out there with school districts that are very similar to ours here in the East Valley.
And then my question is, like, is there a potential for us to become a vaccination site for those 12 to 15, or no? Like, how does that work? I was looking at something on ABC 15 today where a local doctor, actually go to that practice, is thinking about offering it, but I was wondering if, like, districts have plans to do that.
Yeah, great, great question, Ms. Love. The short answer to that is yes. We have a, there's a webinar scheduled tomorrow, the same group that participated in vaccinating teachers. We're all getting together again to see how school districts can partner with Maricopa County and provide vaccination sites for students as well. We'll have more information after Thursday, but my guess is, is the county is looking at how effective those sites were at vaccinating teachers. Now, we have a lot more students 12 and up than we did teachers, so logistically, we'll need to look at how that's going to, how that's going to work. But school districts are in conversations about how to do that, how to partner with Maricopa County to provide this opportunity to as many, you know, students that they want to take it.
Do we have the capacity to hold that many vaccines from Pfizer? Because to my understanding, it was a refrigeration thing?
Yeah.
And that's why certain doctors have it and certain don't? And like, how do we look at getting that?
Yeah, so that is the issue. It's just Pfizer right now that's approved for 12 and older, and that's the one that does have to stay at the ultra-cold temperatures. I was impressed to see, just as I said today, we got that email that students will have the opportunity, 12 and up, to be vaccinated at Maricopa County sites. But that's going to be one of the main questions from our school district and I'm sure others, is that if we do host these sites, how will we keep the vaccinations cold? In the past, with the teachers, we were able to have Moderna, so that didn't need to be as cold. So that will be one of those conversations that certainly school districts will have is if we're going to do the Pfizer, how will we, you know, how will we keep it cold enough?
Mr. Rother, I do believe that Pfizer came out not, a little while ago, that basically said they're, they have modified their storage requirements for that particular vaccine and it is, it is stable more at regular freezer-type temperatures for a longer period than they thought it was stable for. So there have been some changes to those guidelines and it could make it just a little bit easier for other sites to, like us, to be able to administer that.
Great.
To just add one thing to Mr. Rother's conversation also, we really have to get with our, after that meeting that takes place where we get more information from the experts, we really have to get with our logistics team. Because the one thing different, and Larry said it really well, we have many more students than we had staff to get through, but we're also dealing with the weather of July and August and June, depending on when, you know, when they want to start those vaccines. And so we may have a different process because a lot of our volunteers were outside. You know, we may have had individuals in cars, but our volunteers, and it took an army of volunteers, were outside. You'll see a lot of the vaccination centers now have moved to moving indoors. You know, they have the lines outside, but they're moving into indoor facilities to be able to do that. So we'll get more information on that before we move forward to provide that opportunity.
Thank you. Mrs. Brunner.
Thank you for all the work that, I know this took in coordinating everyone and all their opinions, and I'm sure it was a very involved process. I did want to ask what or how the district is using the county dashboard and CDC guidelines in informing this plan. Where do you see it fitting in?
So certainly, we've been monitoring the COVID-19 county dashboard all along the way. And so, and then they made that switch in March, now we just have the two indicators. So as we looked at when we would increase our mitigation, we really wanted to take into account those two things. The current community spread, as indicated by the dashboard, and then also what our individual schools look like and take an individual school approach. So as we've met with the COVID committee and as we've developed this plan, both of those were taken into account, the site data as well as Maricopa County and their community spread. We've been continually reviewing what the recommendations are from Maricopa County. And as you know, some of those are easier to implement than others, and some of the recommendations by the CDC and Maricopa County, you know, are difficult to implement. So we've continued to look at that as we've developed the plan, and that was part of our conversations with the COVID committee and part of the conversations that are happening at the sites and their COVID committees as well.
Also, Mrs. Brunner, the county department recommendations, as we know, are the recommendations for everyone, they're for all organizations to follow as well, not just schools. And we have seen adoptions to those recommendations based on the reality of what's happening in their local and their, and the mitigation strategies that are working correctly for them with adjustments as needed. So we've seen churches change their mitigation strategies, we've seen restaurants and community organizations change. Maricopa's, Maricopa County recommendations are that. And there's a list of strategies that are used. And I'm going to bring us back to a presentation that we made months ago, and I know it's kind of a analogy of car tires and being properly inflated, that when one loses some air, that the other ones carry it. And so I think in the plan, we have enough mitigation strategies to be able to carry this forward because we're never actually taking everything away. We are cautiously keeping mitigation plans in place, we're improving them and increasing them at where we see the data saying it has to be done, at the point where it needs to be done in our community, and we're going to be diligent about that. But many of our community activities and associations and places are following not the Maricopa County recommendations to a T, because that's why they're recommendations, otherwise they would be mandates. And right now, they aren't mandates. And so we have to be careful that we don't follow something that's a recommendation all the way to the fact, past its effectiveness and its usefulness. We want to make sure we have that right balance so that we are moving forward, keeping students healthy, not seeing COVID transmissions increase, and when they do increase, we do something about it.
I didn't know if Mr. Gilbert wanted to jump in there or not. Okay. So I guess, I've asked this before, and I understand the desire to look at each school individually, and I think it's actually, you know, ideal if we can do that. But as I've said many times, our district COVID dashboard has issues that I still feel are not really fully resolved. And we never did get information about how or what we base our standards on, the modified standards that are 10 to 20 times what the county standards are for concern, where we go from 0.1% to 1, 1.5 or 2%. And so I guess, this is still my concern, that that plus, that some of the cases are excluded off the dashboard, I believe we had a separate column for some of those, but they're not used in the calculation for the much higher bar that's set for, you know, to reach a level of concern at a site. We also have down on this that it says, we'll consider, you know, further mitigation strategies, and those aren't clear, and we have a lot of when feasible. And I was wondering, what does that look like in a classroom? When we say three feet when feasible, could we get some information about, you know, in first grade, where would the exceptions be? In high school, where would the exceptions be? In junior high, where would the exceptions be, et cetera?
Sure. I would say from the high school perspective, when you look at class size, we're always working to try and have small class sizes, but if within a class you have 30 students in the way that the desks are set up, you might have 29 of those students in there that are three feet, but there might be one that's not. And so I think that's when we're looking at, what does that feasibility look like in a class of high school? It really is going to come down to how they have the desks set up in that classroom and the class size. From elementary, I'll leave that to Mr. Narducci.
And like all the other times that they're interacting too with other kinds of classes besides sitting down in academics.
Right, we'll get additional information for you. But in elementary schools, we, we had the opportunity to, social distance students six feet, and we know that the, when you, when you read the recommendation, it also say, it says where feasible, as well as from the CDC has gone to a line where feasible because they knew kids needed to be in school at the time, and all of a sudden, the feasibility became a little bit more of a reality than, and then that three feet came in. And I don't know if that was of science or if that was of feasibility to get the kids in school, but either way, there was a national push to get our students in schools. The feasibility will be where we can make it happen. Again, a mitigation strategy, and put in place poorly, is not worth the mitigation strategy being done. So I would say we would look at consistency among our schools. Elementary, of course, we have students coming back from our, their, this year at our online academy and Elementary Connect. So many of our classrooms will have 24, 25 students in them, some at 23, but we still know with the three feet that we'll be able to social distance our students. But our teachers are wanting to get back a little bit into having centers where they can bring students back to technology devices, where they can engage students in small groups. We've had some creative teachers who I went and observed on the principal's request to come in and see a small group instruction being done right in the classroom while students are in computers and students leading the instruction, which is what we want, right? So we've, I think our teachers being so resilient, being backed up by great strategies from our instructional resource center, that they'll find ways to be able to engage in that three feet with, you know, keeping the limitations. So I think it's very feasible that we can do the three feet at elementary. It's not very feasible that that will happen in small groups outside. It's not feasible that it's going to happen at home, it's not in activities outside. But I think in the schools, we can, we can work with that practice. Our teachers have done even better than that during the inception of the pandemic.
If I can add from the secondary perspective, the difficulty from the secondary perspective has always been trying to do six feet was just not going to happen. I think when we're looking at three feet, that is much more possible, is much more doable when we're looking at whether it's in the classroom, whether it's how students would be sitting, you know, in the cafeteria, what's happening in PE, those type of things. When we look at what's happening in our activities, our students have been able to do three feet because a lot of what they're doing is either outside or in big spaces. The bigger issue has been walking in the hallways, as I know you know, as to what you do, but it's been classrooms and walking in the hallways. And within the classrooms, six, three feet is much more doable than it is the six feet that we had before.
So, okay. I mean, I don't need to get into tiny details, so I won't ask any further follow-up on that. But is there any, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see anything in here about, like, any kind of goals for us to have our students vaccinated, just like we ask for vaccinations of all other kinds that parents can opt out of if they choose to for their family for religious or philosophical reasons? I was wondering what that's going to look like for next year?
We have had no goals established in regards to vaccination of students, just like any other vaccinations, it is going to be up to the parents to decide if that's what they're going to do. I think it's really difficult to establish a goal when we know it's completely up to the parents. Now, as for us asking, just like with staff, to get vaccinated, we're going to do that. Now, as for us asking, just like with staff, to get vaccinated, we're going to do that. We're going to ask that, you know, everyone, you know, do that part and look to vaccinate their students for school. But we also know that aside from COVID, we have families that choose not to. So we have not had any discussions of establishing a goal, at least at this point.
Or that it's requested with all the other shots on their shot record?
I'm sorry?
Or is it going to be added to the request for the shots that are on the shot record?
No.
Unless those requirements are done, Ms. Brunner, those requirements are done by the State Department of Health and Education as to what's required. And then there's also opt-outs for parents for religious reasons, which we have a formalized process, board policy to do that. I don't foresee Chandler Unified School District moving toward mandatory vaccinations. But I do see us towards providing opportunity and maybe education as to how it might help schools stay open and students be safe. But we're going to leave that decision in the parents', in the parents' hands. They know what's best for their students.
Of course.
As long as it's not recommended by the state.
I'm not saying that we're going to take over their children's health.
Exactly.
But what I am asking is, if we do request that they have the MMR shots and we do request that they have all these other shots, you know, can we look into what the state is planning for COVID as it clearly is a contagious disease, just like some of the other things that we ask, is your child vaccinated or not? So kind of at least we can know whether, you know, what our percentages are, where we're at, what that looks like.
I have not heard of that coming down from the State Department of Health. But if it does, we'll definitely, you know, communicate that. I just haven't seen any plans for the State Department to move in that direction at this time.
I guess I do have some concerns with the AIA rules because we know what happened in this semester with it going back and forth and not following their own medical advisor's And also, did you say that parents, if they are in a classroom, whether a staff member or a student does test positive, that they do receive a letter, much like they would for pink eye or for strep or something like that? Are they getting a letter that somebody in the classroom has?
Yeah, the classroom letter.
Yeah, so, yeah, the classroom letter would go out to any students in the classroom if there's a positive test in the classroom.
Okay. Including staff too, right? If the teacher or a teaching assistant?
We just don't identify.
Right, right.
If it's a singleton position, we don't identify for HIPAA.
But we just say there has been an individual in the classroom.
But we do let them know that there was an active case, whether it be adult or student. We don't specify it, but yes. And the AIA question, did you want us to look into that or?
No, I just wanted to share my concerns that it kind of goes back and forth and seems like it sometimes follows their medical advisor's advice and sometimes doesn't. And that's just a concern. And then I'm guessing that the COA transfer at semester is because of personnel issues. But is there any kind of possibility, if we see a big uptick come, you know, October, which hopefully we will not, and this won't even be an issue, that they could have a little more flexibility? Like, what possibilities are there?
If we see an uptick, there is in the third column that it is, we're going to look at all of our options if it gets to that point.
But when you say when it gets to that point, do you mean the 1, 1.5 or 2%? Because that's never going to happen. Where we're 10 or 20 times.
Yes, when we move into increased COVID cases, that's when we would look at it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Allof?
Yeah, all these mitigations look good, guys, to me. The, I really don't see if it matters if you're three feet away or four feet away. You know, we're really relying on vigilance and testing and tracking and success from the vaccination programs to get the cases down and to keep people from dying. So this is, this is good. Thank you.
Excuse me, a couple other questions concerning quarantining. Will it make any difference whether students, when a student is exposed, whether masks are being worn or not with the involved students?
Yeah, currently, Madam President, currently, it doesn't matter if you have, if you're masked up or not masked up when it comes to quarantining. It actually specifically kind of addresses that in the recommendation.
Okay. And then I've also heard that there, and I'm, I know my facts are not quite right on this one, but there was, I believe, some type of funding available or testing available that was going to be available to schools. Is there, are there any plans for Chandler District to utilize that testing for either testing students for COVID or testing staff for COVID or anything like that? And if not, what are the reasons why we would not be using that?
Sure, sure. The testing that you referred to is called pool testing. So there are school districts, some school districts that have implemented pool testing, none that I'm aware of in Arizona or even the East Valley. And essentially, it's a random testing of a classroom. So all students are tested, and if one of the tests comes back positive, then requires students to quarantine. And those tests then would have to be administered by the teacher. And so our trust has not recommended that any of our teachers do any of the testing when we're quarantining and one test comes back positive for a whole classroom of students and now the whole classroom has to quarantine. We don't think that's the right strategy to take on that. So we have not looked into, and I don't anticipate that we'll look into testing students ourselves. Parents do have, and in terms of the quarantining, if a parent, if a student takes a negative test five days after exposure, then they are allowed to come back after the seven days of quarantining. And so we'll continue to do that. Those tests are much more accessible. There's even home testing now that parents can do. That's a pretty new thing. But in terms of CUSD administering COVID-19 tests, we haven't done it for those reasons.
Thank you. And then when we come to vaccinations, is there, although we haven't said that we would be collecting that information, is there, when students have to go into quarantine, obviously, one of the ways that they can avoid quarantining is if they have been completely vaccinated. And of course, there's the definitions of complete vaccinations. But would there be a situation where we would want to have or ask the parents to voluntarily record that with our schools so that we know that children, certain children or various children have been vaccinated, especially if they've been exposed?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't had that discussion about asking parents to disclose upfront if their students have been vaccinated or not. Certainly something that I think we can discuss now that we know that 12 and over can be vaccinated. I think our initial discussion with this plan was that we would ask parents if their student had been vaccinated to provide us that documentation, similar to the way we do with the, if they've been, if they have a positive test within the 90 days. And if we had that documentation, then they wouldn't be quarantined. But we can certainly explore being proactive with that communication so parents are able to notify us before being quarantined if their students vaccinated.
And I think that as long as we, you know, aren't mandating anything, as long as it's a voluntary thing that, you know, it's really up to the parent and they can choose whether to share that information with us or not, I think that that's important if we do decide to do something like that, so.
One thing that, I mean, the board needs to be cautious with as we move forward is the conditions of, I think Larry covered this in his presentation, but the conditions of quarantine are so much different than we knew when families were keeping their kids home when they were quarantined, and there wasn't any place for them to go. Movies were not, movie theaters were closed, pools were closed and all those. We have little faith in the fact that a group of quarantined students will not have the ability to be in other locations or that they wouldn't have. We may be the strictest, even with these guidelines, that they're going to experience. And so we just have to be very cognizant that we're hearing from other districts that quarantining, and I think we're even going to hear some opinions come down about quarantining when you have multiple variables that affect the outcome. And it's not as clear as to students following the recommended go home, don't go out, don't be with others, stay, you know, those recommendations may not fit the same quarantine that we did in the height of COVID. So we may be changing that as time goes on based on the fact that our students have access to multiple places in our community where their restrictions are quite less.
And is there, and I assume that if a student is quarantined from school, it does not necessarily mean that they are quarantined from any other activities like daycare or any other businesses that they might be frequenting so that they can be out in the community?
Correct. It all depends on how that parent works with that quarantine, as well as the quarantine care plan that's in place for the student. Now, if a student is symptomatic, that doesn't change. We go into next year, if we're symptomatic, we follow the same, the same protocols that we have in place now.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Mr. Worth, did you, I know, but did you have any questions for them?
No, I'm too far behind you. Got to catch up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. I truly appreciate all of the input and all of the solicitation of input that your team has gotten from various stakeholders within the community and within the district. And I agree with you that, you know, it's, I think everybody, everyone, it's such a hot topic, and everybody has a different opinion on masks and mitigation strategies. It's very, very difficult to find common ground in a lot of this. And sometimes it's almost impossible to find common ground with the differing of opinions. And so I, it's a testament to all the things that you, your team's skill here, this team's skill to basically be able to find out what some of that common ground has, is within the district and the community so that we can move forward, keeping our students safe, our teachers safe, and our community safe. Thank you.
Madam President, thank you. I do want to thank not only the district team who have worked tirelessly and on phone calls during their vacations, during the summer, during intercessions to be connected, but these COVID task force who, I think they signed up for a couple of meetings and didn't realize it was going to be such a long term of getting together. And we had heard that feedback, just that they stuck with it and gave their honest feedback. We were able to do that through multiple ways, Metta Meet was one of them, where they could give their feedback without feeling like their opinion wasn't valued. And then our sites, our principals, and as you know, everybody's a little tired right now and looking to get into the summer. But our sites and our teachers have just done an amazing job with things changing on them and following mitigation strategies to not only keep themselves safe, but also our students safe. So I thank you for all the support you have given us in moving forward. And I think we have a great plan in place, and we'll assure you that we'll stay connected to any changes that do occur.
Thank you. All right. I guess we do have, oh, I think we have a question from the audience.
Yes, thank you for that presentation. I just had some, two very specific questions and one general one. My name is Kurt Roors. I'm a parent in this district. First question was about board meetings. I've been here for the last year, having to wear a mask, but it didn't seem to be addressed here. When can I take off this mask and when can we get more chairs in here? Would be the first question. Second question, it would be really nice to attend a football game this fall, and wasn't quite clear when we can do that. It's a great enjoyment to me at the end of the week to see some of the very, very competitive sports that we have here in the district. Third question, a little more general. We seem to have a new phrase in our lexicon, post-COVID. Seems we'll be using that more. And I do understand the plan that you have, and it comes from an abundance of caution in case things get worse. But the question is, what if things get a lot better in this thing appears to be behind us? When do we get to a point where there are essentially no restrictions? You know, back to normal or post-COVID, whatever that means? So those three questions, board meetings, football, and when do we get to no restrictions?
Well, I will leave the, I will leave the board meetings to the board. As for athletics, we are moving forward with athletics in the beginning of the year. So there will be sports going. We have sports going currently, and so that will continue moving into the beginning of the year. And, sorry, I missed the line.
When do we get back to normal?
Well, I think as we as a group, as well as working with the task force, as well as listening to the feedback from our governing board, we will continue to monitor the data. We will continue to monitor what we're seeing from the Department of Health here in our state, as well as what's going on in our communities. To, our goal is to continue to move toward more and more that there is less restrictions and we're more to normal as we move forward.
And Dr. Gilbert, Ms. Roar, I think part of that question has to do with looking at the data again. If we start to see COVID cases and flu cases differentiating themselves out and also seeing that we go toward the green, those will be questions that we ask ourself, are we ready as a community to go? And I think we'll get plenty of suggestions once we start to see those cases be minimized and back in the green, which we were at one time, right? So that's going to take a lot of feedback based on where we are. Believe me, there's a lot of people, everybody in this room wants normalcy. It's just there's a lot of caution going into that. And so we're respectful of everybody's piece. The other thing that I did neglect to say is that we have a lot of parents that are concerned. We have some kids that are medically fragile. We know that. We will continue to take care of our medically fragile students, and we will continue to give them accommodations as appropriate, as just being responsible. So we don't want our parents to feel that that's a neglect in the plan. It's just we will always be responsible to help them with accommodations. As far as board meetings, I think we had said that at the end of May, that we would be going to masks optional. So I would think that that would follow suit, but that would be up to the board to decide since this is their meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Narducci. I do believe, though, that we will continue with limited capacity in the boardroom. Just as we are, as we try and maximize our distant, or we have a minimum three feet distance between our kids, we're going to try and maintain, I would say we should be trying to maintain that in the boardroom also. So with that said, I guess we will conclude our study session unless there are some additional questions from the board. So we have about a 20-minute break until our meeting. Thank you.